That's one of the ones I never thought I'd say out loud. Love Your Lawyer Day. Your lawyer, how please, come on up, come on.
Yeah.
I don't even love my lawyer. This is a proclamation recognizing November 1st, 2023, Love Your Lawyer Day. Whereas the legal profession is one of the oldest profession. And the U.S. has 1.3 million practicing lawyers in 15 different types of law. There are more than 20 million practicing lawyers across the world, including many well-known people who have attended law school. And Love Your Lawyer Day increases our knowledge of law, provides a platform to thank attorneys, and help the lawyers in proper perspective. Now therefore, the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners says hereby only declares respect for and recognition of November 1st, 2024, as Love Your Lawyer Day. We call upon everyone in Fairfield County to observe this day and wonderful services provided by the Fairfield County Prosecutor's Office. We love you, Fairfield County.
Thank you.
I'd like to declare that I think we've gone too far. Amy.
Uh, I couldn't agree more.
One, two, three. One, two.
This is a proclamation recognizing November 17th through the 23rd, National Apprenticeship Week. Well, National Apprenticeship Week still raises and highlights developing a highly skilled workforce to meet industry needs through free apprenticeships and apprenticeships. And apprenticeships allow, therefore, to create customized training plans, strengthen their workforce, and lead to higher rates of retention and employee growth. And 2024 marks the 10-year anniversary of the National Apprenticeship Week. We decided to highlight local apprenticeships, Hocking College, Faithful Electric, and Magnificent, and created apprenticeships at Hocking, Ohio University, in our community. Now therefore, the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners does hereby formally recognize November 17th through the 23rd as National Apprenticeship Week. Thank you all very much. Who's going to speak about?
Yes, it's a great work we're presenting today. Faithful Electric, they run a fantastic apprenticeship program here locally. And McFerrin University and Hocking College partner with us to deliver our outreach and programs to county workforce center. Certainly a huge thank you to them and all the partners. Best.
These skill-craft people, so training them is the right thing to do. And happy to have apprenticeship with Fairfield County. And uh, yeah, provides dignity and um, and a career path for folks that may be good living wage. So we're happy to be part of the county for the season.
Happy to be a part of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. All right, execution, everybody.
One, two, three. One, two.
We have two from the Auditor's Office. First one is National Notary Public Day. So we know republics. Proclamation recognizing National Notary Public Day. National Notary Public Day was established in 1975 to date and recognize notary's public service and contributions to Congress. And the day of November 7th was chosen in recognition that America's first notary, Thomas Mubio, was appointed in 1639. And the notary public in the state appointed is a state-appointed official who serves as an impartial witness to deter fraud. And some duties of notary could administer any votes and admissions through court proceedings and when officials are sworn in the office. In the practice of the notary public, these facts that each of our time and people were taught should be right. Notaries was appointed to as a public official to create written documents, out of agreement for wills and full number of same keeping. And there are seven notaries in Fairfield County Auditor's Office now who serve the public in no charge. Now therefore, the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners says hereby only apprenticeship meant for recognition of November 7th, National Notary Public Day. Call upon everyone in Fairfield County to observe this day to increase recognition, respect, support for notaries' contributions to local government and Congress.
So if we didn't begin with seven notaries, we only had one. And Brandon Meyer had an idea that if we were able to have additional notaries, that we could offer the services to internal departments as well as others. One thing I really like about Angel Horn is she accepted that responsibility, really opened her arms around it. So we have now the compliment in both buildings to be able to advertise this and offer. I'd like for Angel to, you know, be able to accept that. Oh, Dean.
And here, I'm going to, you all can hear me. He's been a notary 47 years. They haven't grown me up yet. This one is a proclamation recognizing Geographic Information Systems Day on November 20th, 2024. Those geographic information systems, GIS, technology allows us to see and model complex relationships and patterns to develop good responses and services. And there's a need to promote GIS awareness, education, and technical training so we can use this rapidly developing technology to its full potential. Character values those that have chosen GIS as their professional or as part of their discipline to improve the lives of our citizens. Having a day of GIS activities open to citizens and government leaders with all promotes STEM education inspire others to a higher calling to use technology for good. And Fairfield County has committed to utilizing GIS to inform decision-making and better service residents and make useful geographic information open and easily available to the public as a platform for innovation supporting public safety, real estate assessment, utilities, mapping, surveying, planning, and more. Now therefore, the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners says hereby formally declares respect for and recognition of November 20th as GIS Day. We call upon everyone in Fairfield County to observe this day to increase recognition, respect, and support for GIS professionals.
So we do have several activities planned for this and we have participated in statewide groups to make sure that their county's up behind. Because I'm every county has GIS, very proud of our professionals in that area.
One, two, three. One, two.
Last one we have is for Operation Green Light. If there are any veterans in the room, may I see them come up? Fine, Jim, Bart. This proclamation recognizing November 4th through the 11th, 2024, for Operation Green Light for veterans. But the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners have great respect, admiration, and utmost gratitude to the men and women in our forces who have selflessly served and sacrificed to our country and this community to maintain freedoms in the way of life and joy. The Board of Commissioners seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. Veterans continue to serve our community, American nation. Veterans are blown the horse for this group's civil service and by functioning as county veteran service officers to help other service members access federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. Studies indicate that many service members experience levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life, and many are at high risk for suicide in the first year after military service. And the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. Fairfield County Board of Commissioners appreciate appreciates the sacrifices to rate United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now therefore, the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners hereby formally declare November 4th through the 11th, 2024, to be designated as Operation Green Light for veterans to slithen honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform who have served or are transitioning from active service by encouraging all citizens of Fairfield County to join the board showing your gratitude by displaying a green light in their window or the front door. Thank you to our veterans.
Thank you very much, Ron.
One, two, three. One, two.
Uh, Dave Levacy was recently named a member of the Ohio Veterans Hall of Fame and his election is coming up. Proud of his service. So I'll let these guys, thank you all.
So um, this is a time for public comment. If you wish to do so, please approach the podium, give your name and address, and please limit yourself to uh, three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Ray Steeman. 1581 Wesley Way, apartment 22, well, 222, I think triple. I'm glad to see the veterans honored here in November. And being one myself, I'm probably one of the oldest in this room, for sure. But uh, the veterans over the years have not been recognized as they should, especially the wounded ones. They're the ones that we should be honoring today because they gave their life for this country. And when we were serving, we didn't know exactly what we'd have to do or how we'd have to do it. But sometimes those moments when you're under fire and in the military, you don't think about what you're going through that much until it comes to realizing that it might be your last day. And we have to thank our Lord for serving and being able to come home to our families and live a life, full life. So we thank you. And I want to pray for those veterans. Lord, we come before you as a nation that we have not always honored our military and their service. And I know that happened a lot during Vietnam. And we had a lot of bad things said about the military during that time. And much of it was not true, but there is some always, some truth to it too. So Lord, give those veterans the proper recognition and may they be recognized by their families. And we know that there's many that are serving, that have served in the service and now are on the streets of this nation. And it's something that we should all be ashamed of. And we pray this, in the name of Jesus, that you watch each, over each one of them and give them their life that they deserve. Amen.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you for your service. Who would like to be next, please?
Bernie. Sharon Beimer, 3464 South Bank Road. Um, of course, this is about solar. Last week, I took another trip to Fox Squirrel, which is EDF's other project that is about to go. The last of it is just about to go online. Um, and I learned some things last week that are a little bit troubling that um, we're going to bring up, you know, with our case at the Ohio Power Siding Board. Uh, but as we're doing our research and everything, and I noticed over there, it's about 4,500 acres. And ours, the first project for Eastern Cotton Tail is 1,550 acres. And then they've got a second project that'll be approximately 800 acres. Um, but there are very few homes around the project in Madison County, the Fox Squirrel project, because the farms over there are massive. I mean, thousands of acres are massive. And as I was driving around over there and talking to people, I realized that, you know, over here, we have a lot of homes around the project that is expected to take place. And the landowners that are participating in the leases for the Eastern Cotton Tail project, there are only 13 of those. Uh, even though there are 31 parcels, there are only 13 owners. And eight of those property owners don't even live there. So five appear to reside in Walnut Township. The rest of them don't. The non-participating residential homes, there are 85 homes and structures that are actually adjacent to or included in um, close to about 500 feet within solar panels. There are 259 homes that are within a half-mile radius. And that's not very far. There are 1,029 homes that are within one mile of that project. Now, Walnut Township is going to grow. The villages are going to grow. And in Eastern Cotton Tail's application, they show several of the villages that are going to lose population. I don't think that's accurate. We were at a Baltimore City Council meeting last night, and there are two properties that are going to be annexed in, and they've got plans for homes on some of those properties. So the, the, the figures that are in the application are just not true. Um, there are other items in their application that are also inaccurate that we'll address those later. But I just wanted to let you know that there are a lot of homes and a lot of people around this project that are going to be affected. And I've got 26 more pages for shelf or um,
Thank you.
Petition.
Who would like to be next, please?
Chinga, anything on legal, Amy?
Well, up to last week, um, you know, the annexation for Election House for Fairfield Township is on. I guess we have the hot word for approval here in a couple days. Uh, we did speak about our road maintenance agreement, and we had very good progress with the city and uh, some of those provisions, and I definitely just that the city is executing that agreement. We should be getting a clean copy here shortly. So you guys should be seeing that after about next week, but definitely for the annexation's approval. So I wanted to bring that attention. And I just want to thank the city for even with cooperation through that process. And that's all I have.
Right. Thanks, Amy. DEF County Administration update.
Thank you, Commissioner Levacy. Um, today, uh, the 2025 meeting scheduled for the Commissioners is on for approval. Um, there are 53 review and regular meetings scheduled for 2025. The revised code requires Board of County Commissioners to hold at least 50 regular meetings per year. The Commission will also hold five of their 53 meetings in the evening at 7:00 P.M. With one of those evening meetings being here in Commission Chambers and the other four throughout the county at various locations. The first meeting of the year, uh, it's worthy of note, will be January 7th, 2024, at 9:00 A.M. in this room. This is a week earlier than in previous years. This is due to a change in the revised code, which allows the Commission to hold their reorganization meeting in December rather than by the second Monday in January. Um, the administrative approvals, there is a review packet containing the list of administrative approvals in today's packet. For today's meeting, there are 20 resolutions on the agenda for the regular meeting. Resolutions of note include a resolution to approve the six proclamations that were presented at the beginning of today's meeting. There is a resolution approving the conditional acceptance of the DHL public improvements. The developer has completed the improvements in accordance with the approved construction drawings and has provided an amendment to the irrevocable standby letter of credit to reflect the three-year maintenance requirements. Is there anything from economic development on that? Okay, thank you. Uh, also on from RPC is a second resolution to approve conditional acceptance of uh, the eastern estates at Lake Forest subdivision in Violet Township. This is for acceptance of the public improvements. Uh, that has a three-year maintenance agreement as well. Is there anything from RPC on that? Okay, thank you. Resolution approving a bid award to Fletto for the CDBG uh, 2022 Village of Pleasantville, uh, Park Concession and Restroom Pavilion. Is there anything for that one? Josh?
Just the words I did, um, not to the last. I'm surprised we don't see anything.
Thank you. Um, a resolution authorizing the approval repayment uh, extension from CDBG Fund 27488 to the general fund. And a resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2025 Ford van for Fairfield County Transit, now known as the Link. Um, resolution 202408 dot 27 dot W allowed a sub-grant agreement between uh, developmental disabilities and transit for the ARP funds designated uh, to DD to be used for the purchase of this accessible van for the transit system. So that's all of our resolutions of note today. We do have budget review. Bart?
Yes, just a reminder for all beyond given from departments that number four budget draft that's put in on December 2nd at noon. And as far as ARP, we're going to be reaching out to everybody uh, within our organizations to review, to get updates on ARP projects as well as any work and purchase orders as we move towards the deadline of December 31st of this year for having all ARP unfulfilled.
And we've all done it. We've got everything done but 135,000 obligated out of the 30.
Yes.
Calendar review and invitations received.
Thank you. The Engineering Tech Labs sent their invitation, their official invitation for the ribbon cutting, which is November 6th at the Workforce Center in Carroll. Under correspondence, we have a press release um, issued from the Commissioners' Office titled Fairfield County Commissioners Announce New Brand For Transit System. There is also an article in Lancaster Eagle Gazette titled New Fairfield County Run Public Transit Now Has A New Name, The Link. We have a press release from the Auditor's Office titled Dr. Carrie L. Brown Earns Excellence In Government Leadership Award. Also from the Auditor's Office, we have the Wednesday Word of the Wise, a memo regarding examples of supporting others so they are not left behind, and the Auditor's Wins of the Week. We have a thank you note from the Fairfield County Fair Board to the Commissioners, correspondence regarding industrial solar projects, and three newsletters. One from the Health Department titled Health Matters, one from DD titled Imagine, and the newsletter from the um, Commissioners' Office, Fairfield County E-News Updates. That's it.
Fisher, fix any old business?
Yeah, last week we had the opportunity to meet with the Attorney General. He was in for a roundtable over at the Work Center and uh, I thought that was a productive conversation. And had a chance to meet with the Mayor of Baltimore to uh, in his group, to have a productive conversation about uh, potential cooperation with Liberty Township on some stuff that's happening, as was mentioned by Amy in our um, Baltimore's growing and we're encouraging them to do an NCA with Liberty, and I think we're making progress on that. Excuse me. And then uh, this Friday, I was able to attend the CCao War Meeting. CCO continues to advocate on behalf of counties all across the state and doing a great job with that. That's all I have.
Fisher Davis, anything?
It's a couple of things, if I might. I was thrilled to be invited, participated in a candidate forum last Tuesday in Walnut Township. I think one of the civics uh, asked us to put it together. Nobody came to hear us candidates. I was so happy to be there and always happy to tell our story. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention is I did have an opportunity to meet at length yesterday with Scott Duff and uh, Kristi Nolan regarding issues surrounding uh, MCU. And felt like it was a really productive meeting. We're, we're starting to get really solid information about the situation there, what it is, what it isn't. And uh, with your uh, endorsement, we'll keep working on that towards a good solution.
Definitely endorsed. Yeah. Fisher Davis, any new business?
Yeah.
Fisher, fix.
And this Friday, um, our county engineer Jeremiah Hub and a bunch of other folks, I think Rick Zabreck might be involved, uh, are having a joint meeting with Morpse and ODOT at our request to talk about the uh, significant infrastructure projects that we have um, on our wishlist. Um, this was a second follow-up meeting to uh, you know, Jeremiah and I had with Morpse a year ago, but now we've got NOD involved and uh, the state's um, Development Department will be there as well. So uh, we continue to, to bang the drum, trying to get more state and federal dollars for into Fairfield County to support our infrastructure needs. And I'll let you know how it goes.
Pedro Bonson, anything?
Quickly, uh, last Thursday, I attended CFAM, which is the Center for Public Investment Management for the Boston Center hosted by Treasury, uh, State Treasurer. And uh, big emphasis on cybersecurity. I know our IT is heavily, heavily cybersecurity. Interesting one is they said by direction of direct deposits. With the lies that we, I know we all keep our eye out for you know, suspicions.
Zip. Lisa. Lisa.
Uh, just thanks to Amy and her team for always answering our questions when we have them and taking care of all kinds of things for us. Just, they're always, sure they're busy, but they always make time for us. We appreciate them.
You're good. Dr. Brown?
Yeah, how is news we have in the office is welcoming a new baby. Kit Burley had her baby. She named her Violet, Blake. And uh, very happy mom and baby are doing well. So when you see her when she returns in a couple of weeks, certainly congratulate Kit. Want to mention that um, in some of the examples of our communications, sharing them with you all too, from up in case you have any feedback about those communications. And for example, we have the property tax reduction communication that's being modeled now to be used statewide phases. So I'd like to hear about stakeholder groups here. So as you read that, if it makes sense to you, if it's something that feels like something's missing, if you have any questions. So when I send those, I really do want feedback about that. And from a budget perspective, the conveyance fees are showing an imp. Good uptick. There's some explanations for that uptick. Um, right now, we're at 3.57 in the aggregate for the year, recommended earlier in the year that I thought it would be around 3.3. That difference is, it is about 700 apartments were conveyed to owners and they're becoming condominiums. So that was a big transaction all at once. Just wanted to mention that in case you happen to see that revenue analysis as well.
I have a question about that. Difference between a 3.3 and a 3.57? Is the 3.3 annual number and the 3.57 a number to date?
The 3.57 is to date as of October. The annual estimate was 3.28, I think, in the aggregate. So it'll be more than that. There's a big factor in there that relates to it.
I understand. In this context. I understand. In this context, if you recall, if not, you can get it to me later. But what your advance fee estimate is for 25?
There's an increase, but not as much as that. I don't think we'll have that big of an increase. Plus, as we look at modeling that, there just aren't as many things being conveyed as there were a whole bunch at once. And now I don't think there's many available. You'll see an increase, but it's not a large increase like you've seen over time.
That increase will be increase in relation to the 2024 estimate or the 2024 actual?
Estimate. Look at it again, though. Look at it again in the context of the whole. I think there will be an adjustment likely with interest income perhaps, and maybe a few other adjustments. We're working on a new technology of DocLink. That is, if you're familiar with the equal system with the state, it's sort of like the equal system for local governments. And it allows people to give information, have access to information very quickly. And it'll affect about 60 different political subdivisions. Very excited about that. Begin that in September. We really have an internal deadline of January 25. But it's self-imposed, and we'll change that if we need to. The law split process. The application is going very well. Again, it's a self-imposed deadline, but if we can keep it to that January 25, then we'd be very excited about putting that in place. I see Dan over there. Thank you for the help with the single sign-on. It was a big part of moving into that application. We are seeing an uptick in people that are trying to redirect. And Jim mentioned that, the Wednesday Word of the Wise, it's in their internal control manual. Departments do know that they need to, you know, look out for that sort of thing. But when we in the auditor's office, then we'll say work with the department as opposed to working with us as part of that control procedure. All of you work with the vendors. All of you have contact with the vendors. You'll get the things on letterhead. It really shouldn't be coming to the auditor's office. That's where you're getting some areas where people are just acting upon information or requests without having a full picture. But to the Take Back the Night event last night, it was to allow opportunity for voice to those who have suffered domestic violence, views of all different crimes. It was a very moving event. It's still with me. I say thank you to Ohio University for their organization, and thank you to the Lighthouse for the work that they provide. Freedom is in free. It's coming up this week. We have several volunteers for that. Our staff wanted to say thank you for the holiday schedule. And happily, the dog license has a new application, which I'm very happy about. I've been trying to change that for a couple of years, and finally I've got that changed. It's cleaner. It's easier. You'll know what to do. And I'm looking forward to y'all getting it and being happy. Rather than a page of a block of words, you'll be able to decipher the next actions that need to.
Very good. And congratulations on that, those award. And Murphy Case is starting to grow.
Can't get it organized, put it in one place to really enjoy that. One thing I will mention about that, I've had opportunity to connect with some people that I haven't connected with for more than three decades. And that's been a real pleasure to really reconnect with some folks that have moved on to different states even and started a early morning Zoom based upon these reconexions to just talk about some things related to artificial intelligence and other types of factors that are part of our change, changing world. And looking forward to continuing that, reporting on that a little bit. It's just one of those opportunities that came from that connection.
Tony?
As was mentioned in the calendar update, we have the Engineering Tech Lab. Next Wednesday, the sixth app form.
Amy stepping it up, sitting at the big table.
John?
I'll say this, John. You know, last week, we mentioned, since we had United Way here, she mentioned $2,600 current shortfall for Dolly Parton's imagination library. And, you know, John just lost his mother. John? And he asked, requested that donations be given in your mother's memory. And people stepped up. We have in excess of $5,000. So, uh, thanks. It's amazing. Appreciate it. Yes. Well, thank you.
Dan?
Uh, thanks, Jim, for, you know, bringing up cybersecurity. The first thing I thought of was how the auditor's office kind of helps with making sure that those redirect tags or whatever you want to call them don't successfully happen. Uh, so I think you've got good awareness in the county with regard to that. And in terms of our annual training for all employees, we're a little over 80%. There's just a couple of days left, so I'll be knocking on some doors here soon to patch folks along. That's it.
And in going through that training, actually, I thought it was probably one of the better training that I've witnessed.
It is well done. Yeah. It's good for us to complete just for our, you know, personalized over and above what, how it helps.
Cory?
Tony?
Very good. Please rise if you're able and join me in the practical allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any announcements?
There are no announcements.
So approval minutes for October 26, 2024. Submitted? Second. Discussion?
Did you say 26 or 22?
22.
Got it.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Okay, approval budget hearing minutes for October 22, 2024. Submitted? Second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Abstain.
Minutes are approved 2-0 from the commissioners, Resolution 2024-10.29.a, a resolution authorizing the approval of proclamations.
And there are commissioners of move items A, B, C, D, and E?
Okay. Discussion? Seeing that, roll call, please.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. Fairfield County Emergency Management Agency, Resolution 2024-10.29.f, a resolution authorizing the approval of repayment of an advance to the general fund from EMA 2890, this Q R 23 Hazardous Materials Emergency Planogram.
Submitted? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution 2024-10.29.g, a resolution to appropriate from an appropriated major expenditure object category, County Engineer 2024 Motor Vehicle for Comp Time Payoff.
Fairfield County Engineer, move items G and H?
Discussion? Seeing that, roll call, please.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution 2024-10.29.i, a resolution to approve a memo expense memo receipt for the cost of transportation paid at Lancaster Fairfield Public Transit as a memo expenditure for Fund 2599 Workforce Fund.
Fairfield County Job and Family Services, I move items I, J, K, and L?
Okay. Discussion? Seeing that, roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. From Lancaster Fairfield Community Action Agency, Resolution 2024-10.29.m, a resolution to approve the CFLP Solid Waste District Recycling Services Contract Fourth Quarter 2024 Budget Revision Request.
Submitted? Okay. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. From Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, Resolution 2024-10.29.n, a resolution to approve conditional acceptance of the DHL public improvements.
Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, I move items N, O, and P?
Okay. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. The Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution 2024-10.29.q, a resolution approving an account-to-account transfer into major expenditure, expenditure object category.
Submitted? Discussion? Please.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. From South Central Major Crimes Unit, Resolution 2024-10.29.r, a resolution authorizing an account-to-account transfer for MCU Fund 7829, Justice Assistance Grant 22.
Submitted? Okay. Discussion? Seeing that, roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. From Fairfield County Transit, Resolution 2024-10.29.s, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2025 Ford and Transit van for the total cost of $94,947.
Submitted? Okay. Discussion? Seeing that, roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. Payment of bills, Resolution 2024-10.29.t, a resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need Board of Commissioners approval.
Submitted? Discussion? Seeing that, roll call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. The next regular meeting is scheduled for November 5th at 9:00 AM.
So at 10:30, Commissioner, I believe Commissioner Davis has his connection video. And at 11 o'clock, we will have the land bank. In the meantime, is there any additional item to come before the Board of Commissioners at this time? Looking motion to adjourn? Okay. On favor, signal five of saying aye. Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you.